Anna Shaw is going to lead us in invocation.
Okay. Can we bow our heads, please? Father, we thank you for this evening that we can gather here together freely, Father. And I want to bring honor to the city council members for their dedicated work for this community. We thank them so much for that. And for the ladies at work upstairs, special blessing for those girls, the city workers, also the police officers, Father, that you have a special blessing and protection on them because they protect us. And for the mayor too, Father, we thank you for the progress that's been made in this city. So we ask for a good meeting tonight, everybody gets along and everything flows good, and we do everything for the best of the community. In Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have everybody here, seven o'clock. So I will call a meeting to order, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome to all of you. Thank you for coming out on this tear of length. Devin, would you take roll call, please? Randy Coffey? Mike Connell?
Here.
Vinny Galvano, here. Larry Lambert?
Here.
Bob Porter?
Here.
Oh, I didn't see you come in. Steve Wallace?
Here.
Mayor Sukhiman?
Here.
All accounted for except council member Randy Coffey. Looking for approval of our agenda for tonight?
Move that the agenda be adopted as printed.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now the thing that I usually miss, reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the December 16th, 2021 regular meeting.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. So, moving straight into reports. I'm going to flip this order around and do the Small Town America Civic Volunteer Award first, if that's okay with everybody. Anybody? Everybody all right with that? As you all know, I did nominate two of our community residents who served the city, one on the council and one in two other capacities. I nominated them through the Small Town America Civic Volunteer Award. It was for the year of 2021. And I've heard back regarding these nominations, and I'd like to just read one letter. They basically say the same thing. The sponsors of the 2021 Small Town America Civic Volunteer Award would like to recognize and thank you and your nominee for participating in this year's program. While your nominee did not make our final top 100 list of honorees, we believe all civic volunteers should be applauded for the vital role they play in their communities. This year's program was extremely competitive, with nearly 700 nominees from 49 states. Selecting the final 100 honorees was exceptionally challenging, and in no way diminishes the outstanding work being done by so many civic volunteers throughout the country. We would like to thank you for taking the time to nominate your local hometown hero for the 2021 Small Town America Civic Volunteer Award, and encourage you to nominate a local civic volunteer for next year's program. We consider all nominees to be winners in their communities, so please accept the small token of our appreciation. Thank you again for participating in the 2021 Small Town America Civic Volunteer Award program. And these are being awarded to Larry Lambert. And stay right up here for photo op. And Lee Luntzka? He said he would come because he knows I like to embarrass him. Okay, ready? You mean, show your sign? Show your sign. Put it on your head. No. One, two, three. Beautiful smiles. There. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Moving on then, on our agenda, we have special reports from Tim DeLu and John Plowman from CESA.
Thank you. We're both here.
Yes. Good.
I'll start. Tim wants to add anything, he certainly can. What I did was I did a little more in-depth, I did a little comparing of numbers, and also at times we forget how much the CESA Alliance does for ambulance and of course fire. So what I'd like to first do is, for the ambulance, the communities that we serve, and we serve the city of Perry, Perry Township, Village of Morris, Chiwasi Township, Village of Bancroft, Antrim Township, Burns Township, Village of Byron, City of Duran, Village of Vernon, Township of Vernon, and Pennington Township, part of Pennington Township, and in part of Chiwasi Township. Sometimes I forget, that's all the stuff we do for the ambulance. Now for fire, we take care of Perry, Perry Township, Village of Morris, Antrim, portion of Chiwasi Township, and a portion of Pennington Township. So fire isn't quite as large, but it still falls under the CESA Alliance, which is our group. One thing that happened this year, we lost a long-term member who had come on when it was just the fire department, was in 1973, that was Bill Colby, and he passed away this year. He's really missed. I mean, he had a lot of knowledge, and he was good at running meetings and taking care of business, but he was here a long time on this board. Another thing that I'd like to chat about a little bit is, about two years ago, we decided that we really needed to raise the money for households from 45 to 65. And of course, coming in with this year's budget, everybody's on board, and most everyone was on board last year. It takes a while for governmental entities to move from what they're charging to the new fee, and they got to get it on their schedule, and some vote for it, some do it in a meeting, and some will do it in the next year's budget, but everybody's on board, which is really good. So we moved from 45 to 65. Of course, we're a little nervous at the present time with inflation at 6% and not seem to be abating at all. Hopefully, 65 will last a while, but we're not sure for each household. We approximately have, we can call them rooftops, but units, 9,600 dwellings in our area for ambulance, which is quite a few. It takes them a lot. And of course, all those addresses are fed into the system and so on and so forth. Now, about a year and a half ago, Duran contacted us, and they had been with MMR, and they wanted to come into our ambulance program. And they came on, and they have a rep, Nick Spaniola, but they're a large entity, there are approximately 5,000 people in their city, and that has proved to be quite beneficial for the CESA Alliance in revenue, and has worked out very well. They've been very pleased with the response times. We do have a response, maybe if you've seen it, the response report we put out every month, and so on and so forth. Also, I'd like to cover just quickly, I could cover stuff all night, anyway, the people who serve on the board. Not everyone that we service for ambulance and fire has a member on our CESA Alliance board. They can if they wish, but some wish not to. They just like the service, they pay for the service, and they pay exactly what everybody else would pay. But we have myself, John Plowman, we have Tim DeLu, the two of us, and then from the Perry Township, we have Mark Frazier, and we have, oh boy, I better bring you down here, Jeff Harris, the hardware gentleman. And then from Morris, with Village of Morris, we had Phyllis Dickerson, and we also have, his name is Bob Peterson, and he just came on because also, about a year and a half ago, Kathy Mullon passed away, and she'd been a long-term member. Other people that serve, Janet Sprague, and she's from Vernon Township, Lori Godfrey from Antrim Township, Tom Deming from Burns Township, okay, Nick Spaniola from City of Duran, and I think I got them all, yes. That's the board. And it's been a good board, everybody comes, usually, we don't have very many absences. Another thing I'd like to touch, with the advent of Duran coming on, especially in the ambulance and the revenues, our revenues have appreciated, which is good. Things cost more, I think we all know that. I mean, ambulances used to cost $100,000, and all of a sudden they were $125,000, and then they were $140,000, and we're probably looking at $160,000, $170,000 now for a new ambulance. Fire trucks, 10% a year, just like clockwork, and so on and so forth. So I'll touch some numbers here. First numbers I'll touch is, what we did through November, I have December numbers, but we don't have them tabulated, but this will be November to November. In 2020, we had 168 fire runs and MFR runs. In 2021, we had 153. Those numbers stayed pretty close year in and year out, for some reason. Now, with Duran, the ambulance in 2020 was 1,624 through November, and this year is 2,037 through November. I might add that the ambulance runs in 19, the end of 19, and '20, we felt were considerably down. There was a lot of people who would not call an ambulance because of COVID, and we know that impacted us, and we haven't really put a number on that, but I would imagine that would be 15% easily. But the numbers have started to climb back this year, to of course, bringing on Duran, we have that. We also have mutual aid, and I'd like to talk about mutual aid for ambulance. Fire, we don't have a lot of mutual aid fires, but we do on ambulances. Employment in the ambulance service has been tough for a lot of departments. There's a lot of people who have not gone into the ambulance service activities for paramedic or EMTs in the last three years. We're seeing it when we have somebody retire or leave and go to work somewhere else. In the old days, we might have had five, six, seven applicants. Today, we might get one after a few weeks, or we put the word out that we'd like to hire somebody, we're a pretty good place to work. And that has become, our surrounding departments have been having the same problems we have if we having a full staff. So again, mutual aid has really picked up. We go onto mutual aid for the areas around us, LSW, that's Langsberg, Sioda, Woodhall. We also help out in Corona. We also help out in Nisa, which is south of us in Inglewood County. We don't share any district with them, but we have a longstanding relationship that if they need manpower, or they have fires towards us, they need takers, we've always gone, even though it's a different county, and they've come for us too. But anyway, that's been a tough area for us, and I don't see that letting up anytime soon. Today, or yesterday, Mark Frazier, who serves on the board, he has been contacted that there's going to be grants for educational opportunities for people in our district, which takes in a lot of area now, that might want to have a career in the ambulance service, paramedic, EMTs. And there's going to be grants for education, and we're pursuing that heartily. We'd certainly like to have more people entering into that from our area and maybe go to workforce, so that would be good. The dollar amounts, I'll touch on a few of the dollar amounts, then if you have any questions, I will upstand for you. Okay. Our budget and our revenue for 2020, and our budget for 2020, was $1,475,000 for both ambulance and fire. I might add that fire's budget has maintained 2020 revenue, and this is tax revenue from the people we serve in that area. 2020 was $286,600. 2021 was $295,000, and 2022, we expect $303,300. With fire trucks going up, and we save most of that money, of course, we have all of your fire department, we save most of that money for the purchase of trucks, but trucks have been going up heartily. I wouldn't be surprised that in the future, where we start discussing that that money that comes in for that would have to go up. A lot of places do a millage, some do a millage with taking money out of their budget, so on and so forth, so that would be a discussion point. For, okay, back to ambulance, our budget was $1,475,000 in '20. 2021, revenues approximately, I don't have the exact number on that because December's not in yet, but I anticipate that to be $1,576,000, and $1,576,000. In 2022, we expect to take in revenues of $1,812,000. Our budget revenues are forecast on the premise that our ambulance runs are approximately $410 per run. Actually, we do take in normally in the area at the end of the year, $435 to $440 per run. So we budget conservatively for the ambulance revenues, but they've always come in strong, and of course, if you need an ambulance, you want that there. So in those areas, also, we forecast low, but this year, with the $65 per household and the new count on household, and the SEV and everything, we have a budget of $1.8 million. For revenues, I wouldn't be surprised if that ends up at $2 million. But we're really busy. Also, that's happening this year, our staff for the ambulance service petitioned the International Association of Firefighters for a union, and they had their union vote, and they're now represented by the International Firefighters Association. That will be coming here in discussions with, the union and management will take place probably in March or early April. We've been contacted by their business association and their union, so that seems to be the timeframe. Other than that, I've probably forgotten several things. Any questions for me that, if Tim would like to say anything, he can certainly ask him questions?
Why don't we do that? We'll have Tim come out, and then we'll fill the questions at the end, if that's okay?
Yeah. Thank you. Excuse my voice, I'm just getting over a little bit cold. So as you know, most of you know, I'm a longtime member of the fire service, and formerly a fire chief, and now you've just recently appointed to the fire board since August. So I don't have all the background that John has, which he has obviously brought detailed for you. I came on in August, and so since I've been there, there's been a lot of things, and the biggest thing was what John just alluded to was the union. And I think there's a great deal of opportunity for our organization to negotiate with the union and move things smoothly through. I feel very confident that we can come to, you know, mutual agreement with them.
Can you explain to us how that's being done, or maybe you were going to, but...
The union, so...
The negotiation, how's that being handled? Who's doing that?
Okay, so from what I gather, the end of November, they voted, right, and it was a unanimous vote to have a bargaining unit. And then at that point, there is our labor attorney and our management team with the CESA board and of course, administration of the fire department, will form a group to negotiate with the International Association of Firefighters. I don't know exactly that timeframe John says.
Yeah, we, it's, our labor attorney is a gentleman out of Lansing named Michael Klack. He has a lot of experience in that area, and he will be our legal counsel and lead counsel on this. And we'll have a bargaining group composed of the CESA Alliance, some of the CESA Alliance members, and of course, the chief. And they contacted us last week, and they said, well, the stuff they have in their plate, they're looking, it'll be several weeks before we can start to negotiate that contract, so on and so forth. So we'll wait.
Okay, go ahead, Tim.
So again, I believe that the team we put together, I think, will be very optimistic and move forward positively with them to come to a successful agreement or contract, if you will. So I would hope that it happens quicker, sooner than later. I know there's bureaucracy that goes on with that whole thing, but if we move forward quickly, I think we can come to a resolution and get everybody to the point where we're on the same page, and we're all working towards the same goal, right, which is protect our communities. So again, I don't have a lot, because I just started in August. From the board side, I don't have a lot of the background that John has, but certainly have the fire side, been there 30-plus years in 12 or 14 as a chief, so I know that background.
We appreciate that experience you're bringing.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And thank you for appointing me to the board.
Yes.
I think we can help there. So any other questions, or...
Well, why don't you have a seat, and then we'll drill you both while you're sitting down.
Yeah.
What question?
That's true.
Steve, do you want to start?
I have no questions. Good job, guys.
Larry?
No, I'm good.
Vinny? Yeah? Bob?
Nothing, thank you.
Yeah, if something pops to your mind, I'm in the phone book, so's Tim. You can find us real easy, we're uptown every day.
You and Mike, have you got any?
No, I won't.
Devin has a question.
Okay, okay, Devin.
So the fire department and both the fire and the ambulance, it has been, what I've been hearing, I don't know how many years in a row, it's switched from having loans on vehicles to actually paying cash. You guys were able to actually have that cushion. And what caught my ear tonight was, is that, so you can correct me if I'm wrong, is, we don't have enough money to pay cash for it, so we're going to up you. So is that what I heard you say?
Yeah.
Because somebody else might have, and so that gives you the opportunity to speak of that, okay?
We have always, when we were able, we started out in 2005, and we are kind of a nonprofit organization. Of course, the full-time employees are on the ambulance side, and the part-time or volunteers, or get paid per run, are on the fire side. Everything that we would make over our yearly budget, or what we would receive from our governing units, that goes into the savings account. If it's related to ambulance budget, that stays in the ambulance and goes into the equipment fund at the end of the year. That's our surplus, or we call profit. And then for the fire, it's the same way, and those funds build. Of course, we tend to buy more ambulances, most of the time, than fire trucks, but what I meant by that is when we seem to be doing very well on the ambulance side because we've been adding districts, and we went from $45 to $65 per household. Now, what that revenue, that 45, let me, I got it here so you can understand it.
Oh, I understand. All I wanted you to clarify was, is that if the coffers aren't big enough to pay cash, you guys are reasonable enough to maybe do a three-year lease, to kind of do that buffer, because that's what I would rather hear you say than to say, well, we didn't have enough in the coffers, it didn't build up enough, so we're going to raise you so we can pay cash.
Okay, let me, okay, let me explain that a little bit. Because we are a governmental agency, and like Tim and I are appointed by the city of Perry, but we're our own local government, we can borrow funds to buy fire trucks, we can borrow to buy ambulances, and we have done that in the past.
Yes.
But over the last many years, we have saved every year, and when we have enough cash, we've been buying our fire trucks and our ambulances and paying cash.
And kudos to you guys.
Oh, yeah.
I understand that.
And actually, from raising from 45 to 65, was the aspect on the household, and also with the Medicare, Medicaid reimbursement rate, which is what Blue Cross Blue Shield pays for ambulance runs, that has gone up a little bit coming in this next year too. So we were really pretty pleased about the fact that our ambulance revenues are going to maintain that level. Also, we had to hire more personnel because we took on Duran, but the monies they're bringing in is more than offsetting that. What I mean by the fire truck, let's just look at the fire truck side. We may be able to keep saving our money and buying fire trucks at the same rate, but if a fire truck goes from $500,000 to $1 million, our SEV does not increase quick enough to pick up those tax dollars. I mean, I'm not saying that we go from the one mil, or what we do now, I'm not, like five mils, but what I might say is we'd have to go from one mil from our departments for fire, maybe to a 1.5 mils. Our costs for our fire departments stay relatively static. If fuel goes up, of course, that costs us a little more money. But keep this in mind too, if the fire truck never leaves the fire hall, that's a great thing. But the ambulances run night and day, 7:24, 3:65, and a lot of times, fire trucks go out with ambulances too, and also sometimes they go out for manpower. We do have a couple MFR units, they're on the scene first, there's one in Byron, we have one here, and that helps a lot too. So what I'm saying is, if we come back in two or three years and say, we need more of a mil, like a mil and a quarter, a mil and a half for fire, it may not necessarily we'd have to ask more for ambulance. They're kind of two different animals that...
I know, you're saying, but I also know that you guys have done so well, and again, kudos to banking it, paying cash, and we've gotten brand new. We haven't always bought brand new either.
Well...
So again, I hear, "Woo!" and I'm like, okay, I want to hear that everything is talked about before you're considering on raising something, as our representatives.
Yeah, but I always try to put out there what could happen, you know?
I don't have a problem with that, but we're on camera, and I think you need, I wanted to put that out there so you could talk about the whole picture.
The reason that really took place is, we wanted to pay cash for vehicles, fire trucks, or ambulances, anyway, but I can remember back before 2005, we'll go back to 2000, and the city and the township were funding a huge portion of the ambulance service, and then all of a sudden, the ambulance service would need a new ambulance, well, where's the money going to come from? In those days, I think it was about 40 grand for an ambulance, or maybe 45. So it really pushed us into having an authority, which is what we're called, and giving us the latitude to raise our own funds, other than the city giving us funds, you know, in appropriation every year. And it's worked out really well. This is our, you know, 2005, until now, that's 17 years, so...
Again, you guys have done a fantastic job. That wasn't...
That wasn't what my point was. It was what I heard and what somebody else might hear. And so I just want to give you the opportunity to explain.
Oh, good, I'm glad I can.
Well, that's what I tried to do is because everybody is listening to you, so I just wanted to make it so you guys do look good, because you do do a good job.
Thanks.
And we appreciate that. So pardon what is now gonna look like in a tank.
Oh, no, no, yes, not, oh, I, you know, I've been doing this a long time.
Just only begun.
Yeah, no. Also, one other thing, we organized tonight, the board of commissioners.
No, let me, let me go, because I've got some things I want to address.
Okay, I'll let you go.
I have, you mentioned that Mark Fraser had information about potential grants.
Yeah.
I sent that information to Guy two months ago.
Yeah, I think it's been discussed, yes.
Well, I never got a reply from him. How would I know? He got that information.
Okay.
I have left him phone messages I don't get a response to. I, I'm not happy with that. I would like some interaction. I know I'm not his boss. Honestly, I don't think he has a boss. He seems to be the boss of it and doesn't answer to anybody. I think he needs to answer to you guys. And you need to answer to me. I want to know why he hasn't applied for grants. I offered, I did, when I finally got him on the phone, talked to him about the city would be willing to offer our grant writer to write that grant for him. He said, okay, thanks. Never heard from him again. There are grants available for equipment. There's grants available for training, like you mentioned. There's low-interest loans available for trucks, for other equipment. I'd really like to see you guys pursue that. I'd like to see you try to get Guy to look at that stuff. Now, if he doesn't have time to do that, then he needs somebody on his staff who can do that. And you guys need to be the ones to ask him to do that. Because he doesn't seem to think he needs to answer to anybody. And I want that to change. I want to see Guy doing his job. I want to see him making sure we've got staff, ambulance and fire staff booked. I know for a fact that that staffing schedule sometimes is blank, that there's nobody on staff for an ambulance run. That should not be, I don't think. Now, certainly, I've never been on the ambulance and I've never been on the fire department, but it seems to me, if you guys are telling people you're covering them, you should be covering them. So if you've got ambulance people coming to you and saying, we don't have anybody scheduled, why is that? Guy's the one who does the scheduling. Why isn't he scheduled? Now, I recognize shortage. Carl's grocery stores had to reduce their hours because they don't have enough people to work. But I think we want people scheduled. I don't think they should be overextending their coverage to collect more money if it's gonna cause us to not have enough people to serve the staffing times. Do you get what I'm trying to say here?
Yeah, I guess.
Does that make sense? Because John looks perplexed, but I see Tim shaking his head, yes.
No, no, I'm perplexed. No, we've, not that I have any information ever of not being covered.
I do, I do. I've had people in my office telling me that. I know it, John. I'm not making it up. I didn't dream it. I need you guys to talk to Guy about that. I think the city wants to know that we've got people scheduled. And if Guy needs help to do that, he needs help to do that. I mean, if the Seca in command person doesn't have anything to do, maybe they need to do that. But it needs to be, it's not being overseen very well. And the board, the CESA board is who oversees all of that. You should know that. You should know what the schedules are, you should see the schedules, you should know if there's people being scheduled, and you should know if there's grant money out there that somebody's offering a grant writer to write for. That should be happening. I'm, I'm less than pleased with all the reports that I have gotten. And it hasn't been a ton, but it's been enough where I've had people in my office bringing things to my attention concerning the fire department and the ambulance that need attention. And I would like both of you to give that your utmost attention. Please, all of that. So that's what I had to say. And Devin's gonna tell me my ears are red because my blood pressure's up.
Don't do that.
So now, if you had something else to say, feel free to do that. I'm finished.
I'm a little perplexed. I mean, yeah, there's been times when guys had to come in and work in ambulance, too. We've had no information that, ambulances are not covered. We have.
Do you look at the staffing schedule?
No.
Okay, I'm asking you to do that. That's what I'm asking. I'm asking for you personally, Tim personally, look at those staffing schedules.
Yeah, we can do that.
And know there's people.
I mean, yeah, we can.
Point taken.
Yeah, okay.
Are you saying that no one has ever approached you with some of these problems?
No.
We have heard of times that, that you can't get a staff because of, people are sick or, you know, called in or whatever, so they can't staff. You have to have, you know, a certain number of people to staff the ambulance and a certain level of qualification or certification to staff the ambulance. So if you don't have that, then the ambulance does have to call out a service. So there has been times that that has happened. I couldn't honestly tell you the total number of times. I have not seen the schedule enough to know that. So I'll be talking out of turn to say that, but.
I'm just asking you to look at it because it was brought to my attention. It wouldn't do me any good to look at it because I don't know what it means anyway. But the CESA board, you are two of them. You are charged with overseeing the fire and ambulance service and the making sure that it's being done properly. And from what I've had in my office reports of, I'm wondering if that's being done. So I don't want to wonder about that.
Right, understood.
Who is Seca in command?
Scott Rudolph.
Scott is the deputy chief currently and Guy is in the process of going through a hiring process.
Every couple of years, we put out for supervisory personnel, assistant chief, assistant chief of ambulance, assistant chief of fire, and he has asked for applications and we're taking a look at them this coming Monday. Many times, those, those positions do not change, but once in a while, somebody steps, steps back and somebody will step up. So that's how we do that.
Anybody else have any questions for them? No, I don't have any more questions. So I think we're all set. Thank you guys for coming in. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move now to public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? We do ask you to limit your time to five minutes. And if you would like to have your name in the minutes, give us your name and address.
Thank you. My name is John Aliski. I'm from Langsberg. And I'm here tonight on behalf of my son, who owns the marijuana and CBD store in Langsberg. And I had read recently that you might all be considering an ordinance coming up in the spring. And we have a lot of customers here that are from Perry that shop at the store. So with your permission, we'd like to start coming to your meetings and just trying to learn and be helpful if we can. I didn't know much about a marijuana store a year ago. And we'd like to invite any of you or any of your staff to come and, if you're like me, you've never been in one before, and we're just, it's a family-run operation right downtown across from the Marathon Gas Station in Langsberg. And so we just kind of wanted to open up a line of communication and stay involved. I've got, you know, my cell phone number I can give anybody and.
If you'd like to give that to the clerk, we'll have her enter that in her minutes for, or not for the minutes, for public distribution, but so that we have a record for any council member. Thank you, John. Is there anything else you wanted to share with us?
No, just that, any questions?
We appreciate that. We do. It's very daunting, all of the information that we have been reading through.
It totally is. And I should say, I'm a retired attorney, formerly with the Attorney General's Office. I knew George Ellsworth, if you know the name, very well. It is, I've been an attorney for 40 years, worked a lot with Jose Brown and others that I'm sure you know. There's not another area of law that changes so much that I've ever seen. And it is daunting. And I feel like I'm dog paddling. Best thing I can do is come and just say, hey, this, this might affect us and so we're naturally interested in following along.
Great, well, we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else here for public comment? Okay, we'll move on then to communications. I think Devin, you have some?
First of all, I just want to make sure that you've seen that I gave a few extra items to you. One of them is we reached out to the service line warranties from American, is the insurance. We weren't sure, we hadn't heard from them a while. John had asked me about it, so I reached out to them. And the concerns the council had was about the letters that would be going out to service line warranties America, to our residents. So you have a draft of what it will look like, and I gave that to you tonight. It wasn't in your agenda packet. Also, there was some attorney information that came in after agenda packet. I want to make sure that you received that. And then last, and unfortunate, I will read an email that the mayor received from Randy Coffey. Subject, resignation. Good afternoon, mayor. I would like to resign my position on city council. I feel I don't have the time to give it my all. It has been great working, great working with you all, and I'd like to help out where I can in the future. Best regards, Andy Coffey, Randy Coffey. And this was received today. Also, there was one other flyer that was brought up. There is a snow sculpture competition that Dory has made sure that you have an application example of. And I assume the mayor's gonna report more details once it's mayor's report.
She is? I didn't know that I was, but I will.
I figured you'd be excited.
I am excited.
Okay.
I have it out there every day. The snow sculpture contest is for the entire month of January. And we'd like the snow sculptures to be built at the bottom, well, between the ballfield and Mudus Hill there. Not so that the kids sledding are gonna crash into them, but over a little ways. We're gonna take pictures as they're built and then at the end of the month, judge them and award four first prizes. And the first prize to each age category will be five movie tickets to the Sun Theater in Williamston for each winner. And then we'll have participation awards of gift cards to various restaurants in the area here. And those will be given to each person that participates. And to help identify who does what, snow sculpture, we have sticks with numbers on them that Shirley has at the front desk upstairs in the city hall. When you are ready to build your snow sculpture, just come in and see her. She'll take your name and phone number so we can contact you, but she'll give you a stick with a number on it. When your snow sculpture's finished, just put that stick in it and then we'll be able to identify who did what snow sculpture. If we don't get any good snow, then I guess we'll have to defer it to another year. But I'm hoping that we get some snow sculptures. I think that would be fun. And I'd like to just take a minute, since we're talking about snow, and say, good job, Bob Porter and the Parks Canoe. That sled library is a big hit.
Good.
You were on Channel 10 news.
Well, I knew I did the interview, but I hope it was TV, so I didn't know when it was gonna be, yeah.
There's kids up there every day using those sleds and it's fun to see them there with their parents and using the sleds.
That was the intent of the committee's, this was committee's goal was for that.
That's great. Well, you've done a good job. I did want to just let everybody know, too, the Greater Langsberg recyclers have added a second day of the month for their recycling drive. They always do the first Saturday of every month from 9:00 AM to 1:00. And now they're adding Tuesday, starting January 25th, from 4:00 to 7:00. They're also gonna do a trial of adding glass. They hadn't been collecting any glass, but they're gonna start that this time on a trial I think that's all the reports that I had. We can move into our department head reports now. Megan, would you like to start?
I don't have a ton to report on this week. There's not a lot going, oh, there's a lot going on, but nothing new. Summer taxes are 95% collected, winter taxes are 41% collected. Just a reminder that residents have until February 14th to pay without penalty and until February 28th to make payments at the city. After that, all payments will be made at the county. We've been working with Huntington since they acquired TCF in October. Since then, I've been successful in negotiating the refund of nearly $400 in accumulated fees that have been accumulating since May. So we've gotten those back. We are also in the process of reviewing our accounts to make sure they're the best fit for the city as far as account types within Huntington. So we've already begun converting accounts to eliminate future fees and reinstate interest earnings going forward. And I anticipate next, within the next couple of meetings, I'll have second quarter budget amendments for you and we'll be starting budget talks here within the department. That's coming up. Any questions?
No, I guess you're good. Thank you. John, would you like to be up next?
I really don't have anything unless someone has questions for me.
Okay. We'll hear from you later about the proposal from Dixon, right?
Yes.
Okay. John, no, I'm sorry, you, John. Kyle?
Head job, lots of jobs.
I also don't have a whole lot. Good evening, everyone. Happy 2022. I was informed the week of Christmas that the 2022 Ford Police Utility arrived to Signature Fortland. So that's hurdle number one. Hurdle number two will be to get the $10,000 or three equipment that's supposed to be installed in it. I don't know how long it'll take, but I have a feeling it'll be a few months. Also, I just wanted to let everyone know we are expanding and improving the camera system that keeps an eye on things at the parks, Public Works and City Hall. That's all in conjunction with the school's server and system. It's phenomenal. We're actually gonna have the ability to install 4K cameras. We're gonna be able to zoom right in. And as it's set right now, any motion is recorded on any of these cameras. Really been impressed and I've really been grateful to be working with Zach from the school and he's really eager to help us out and. school, and he's really eager to help us out and make the improvements. He's added two additional cameras to City Hall here over the parking lots. But anyway, you probably won't see anything yourselves, but as far as what John and I will be able to observe, it's going to be most helpful, definitely. So going to add an additional camera to the parks and keeping an eye on things out there. It's a great system. It's really, really neat. I've been impressed, so. Other than that, I really don't have anything, so. You folks have any questions for me? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Devon?
Business as usual, but everything that I am reading, it does appear that the governor is calling an election to fill the seats of its either state reps or senators. I can't tell you that for sure. But she has asked the Secretary of State to call a March and a May election. I'm reading that Secretary of State has approved this, but I have no details, which I'm going to dig in more tomorrow, so that city's prepared and to be able to tell the public because to have a March 1st election with this short notice, it's going to be interesting. But our Secretary of State says she's got her back, and she can do everything that she can to help us. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Moving on then on the agenda to committee reports. Who would like to bring a report? Bob, we kind of started with you with the snow hill.
I have, other than the snow sled library, I have nothing else to report. We have a meeting, and that's 25th, I believe it is, of this month, so it'll be our first meeting for 2022, and it will be every other month going forward from there. I have from the article in the paper, and so I did get some, Facebook, I did get some response from people, so we'll see if they show up.
Okay.
I think the next thing we're going to start working on, or hopefully, is the pursuing the bike paths.
Okay.
I think. We'll see.
Do you have any donations? If you can watch them?
I haven't looked at it in the last month, so I'm not sure.
Then why do you should report?
Oh, the other, I did get an email from the company that we bought the exercise equipment from. All but one piece is in, in their warehouse in Colorado, I believe. So I called them to wait till all of it gets here. They decided to, because I don't want to pay shipping. So I was going to talk to John later, set up like a work day, probably on 1st of May or something.
Put that on your calendar, John.
Well, I was going to ask you, what are the good timeframe with spring and everything going on?
Okay. Any other committees, Larry?
Just a quickie on business affairs and technology. I mentioned last meeting that we are moving forward to launch our new website, and as far as I know, it's still on track right now for Tuesday, January 18th. So we'll have a little bit more information probably shared in our next meeting if all goes well with that launch. Finance and Ordnance Committee is, their report is continuing to work on gathering information on our medical marijuana ordinance, and we will be meeting next Tuesday at 1:00 PM right here in Council Chambers to continue that discussion. In that same vein, moving on to us about a committee, the Planning Commission is also what, in heavy discussions relative to the zoning portion of that activity, and we've called a special Planning Commission meeting for next Thursday, the 13th, at 7:00 PM here in Council Chambers to continue that discussion. So a lot of activity going on, sorting through all of the nuances, as the gentleman mentioned, of learning our way through this.
Did you say a time for the Planning Commission?
7:00 PM. On the 13th.
Anybody else have any committee reports? Would you want to share the site plan?
Oh, I can. The other thing with the Planning Commission thing, Devon, there's a activity, a company called Motembo Foods did receive approval of their site plan by the Planning Commission at this past Monday's meeting, so they've got a couple contingencies in terms of waiting for some additional approvals from the county that they were certain that they had close to completion, so we'll be seeing a new activity coming along Lansing Road here, hopefully in the not-too-distant future.
If you look at the map over here on the sidewalk, at the very top of that map where it's red and it kind of curves around, but then there's a gray angled piece, that's where Motembo Foods is going in, is that gray angled piece.
Up on the north side of Lansing Road.
Okay, let's move on then to next agenda item, presentation and approval of the bills.
I'm hoping we approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized.
It's been moved by Larry and seconded by Mindy to approve the bills as presented and payment be authorized. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is old business, and this is something we talked about at our last meeting, and Dr. Mica, who had proposed some conditions for purchasing the back of the building that he has purchased, he'll be putting his new orthodontic practice in the front of that building and plans to, at this point anyway, either sell to us to tear down or, or what he said last time was to sell to us to tear down or tear it down and sell it to us empty. Our response after discussion in our last meeting was that that just didn't add up to us, that for the few spaces that it would offer and additional parking, the cost of purchasing just wasn't feasible. He then came back with a new proposal, which you have in front of you, and his proposal is that he would deed us the property, and that then the demolition and development of the parking area would be at our cost. So John, Souter, and I went down yesterday, and we walked through the building, looked at it, measured off his proposal of the back portion of that. Some of you would probably remember, John and Tim, I'm sure you do, Leland, probably, that at one time, like in the mid-'90s, that was the police department, that back building. It connects to, but is not truly an integral part of the front. So John said he would be willing to field any questions that any of you have in relation to how that works, but if I'm not making any mistakes, if I am, feel free to correct me. The roof appears to be all one roof, front to back. I was hoping that it separated, but it doesn't. It's just all one roof that slopes to the east. The three walls of the old police department building, I think if we pushed real hard on those, they might just fall in. And they're really separate from the front of the building, but the roof ties it right together. Doesn't have a basement under it. It really doesn't even have a crawl space, like I could reach through the floor and touch the dirt. What else do you want to add to that? Those three exterior walls are brick.
Yeah. And there's a, you know, it would be getting consumers to move the telephone pole because that would be right in the way on the northeast corner, so you, the maximum we're going to get is three spaces, I believe. There, I don't believe, because you'd be into their other parking up and beside the, for their apartment and the other part of the dentist office.
I assume that three spaces would be worse.
Do we have an estimate of the cost of demolition?
I have it. I'm going to say probably the way that it's going to have to be done, maybe 20,000 to 30,000, and that's not paving, that's just getting the bench out of there. But, you know, I might, I might be a little off, but I don't think so compared to other things.
I did ask one person about that, and they said, well, it really depends a lot whether there's any hazardous materials in there, asbestos, that kind of stuff. There's a furnace that's in there, looks like '90s kind of furnace. It's not hooked up right now, it's just standing there, but just from what I, what I can see, I didn't see anything that would represent any asbestos. But there's a tin ceiling, and I kind of think that tin ceiling goes right up against the roof as high as it was, so I don't think there's room for anything up there. But again, that would make the biggest difference, is if there's something like that that has to be dealt with.
So Dr. Mica doesn't want to do the demolition of the building, even though he's doing renovations, and the building he's keeping?
Well, he's offering it to us as just deeding it to us
Okay.
with us accepting responsibility for demolishing the building and creating the parking.
Who would be responsible to put his wall up, if you're saying it's?
There's already a big hole in it.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's his wall. I mean, we'd obviously have to write things so that it was well understood.
The bricks towards the alley, you can see daylight through in places, so, you know, the, the major cost is going to be, and who's going to incur it when the buildings get separated? If that's going to be part of the demolition, you know, you're going to have to peel back some of that roof, and you can't just go in and knock it down, because I think you're going to affect the rest of the building.
Right.
And there's too much other stuff there, so it's going to have to be done somewhat by hand, but I'm not a demo expert.
Neither am I.
Do you have any thoughts?
You're right on target with 20,000 minimum. The thing I would question is, is it two parcels right now?
Yes.
There is two parcels?
There's two addresses on file. I pulled the file out and looked at that. There is two addresses. There's the one address for the front building, which is 102 Main Street, and the other address for the back, what I call the police department, that's 1092nd Street. Obviously, I don't know all the particulars of his ownership, because if he, if he has a mortgage on this, that mortgage company may not be willing to release that.
That's why I wonder if it was two separate properties, separate tax rules.
Yeah.
Because if not, that's, that's an expense right there just to get units changed.
It is not two separate tax rules, no. It used to be, but it is not. We could work through that stuff, I'm sure, but the big question in all our minds is...
A lot to take on for three parkings.
Three spaces.
You're going to...
It's like, like there's too many things that could go wrong, and...
About 20,000 dollars of space, because the paving's about 10 grand, roughly. And the building, if the building is 20 or 30, so you got a contingency of 10 for the roof, so you got about 50 grand, and that's a lot, that's a lot of money for parking, but...
You may have to meter that parking so you can make some money.
There you go.
There's a, there's an I-beam in that building that's worth more than the building. I mean, it's huge, and I, it has to be anchored on the back end somewhere.
I think it's just anchored, though, John, at the back of what was the pharmacy.
Just a ranch, yeah.
Right, yeah, it's just in that building. The back of that does not have an I-beam.
No.
Does not.
Yeah, personally, I think it's an awful lot of money, like we said. Garner three spaces, you know, he originally came in, I think, with his first note was he can get six or eight spaces out of there. We all questioned that. You know, even if you get four out of it when he cleared it all away, that's still awfully expensive parking for not prime parking, if you will. It still requires people to agree to park on the backside of a building and walk around, not like being able to pull up out front and enter the main street to businesses. I'm not sure how utilized some of our off-street parking is in the other areas that we have right now. You know, in peak times, maybe, but, you know, most of the time, I'm not sure that parking that's available behind the fire department, for example, is fully utilized or behind several pharmacy. So 20,000 a spot to have three or maybe four unutilized additional spots.
So I guess the question is, how do you want me to respond to this newest proposal from Dr. Mica? Do, do you counsel want to move ahead to formalize the dollar amounts by getting estimates for demolition? Or, I mean, I absolutely agree with everything I hear you saying, I just want to know for sure how you want me to respond.
I think it's less to time to do that.
If Dr. Mica wanted to get estimates on demolition, we can address this again, but if it has to be significantly less than what we're guessing it's going to be.
Yeah. I did ask him if he had any. He said he did not.
If he wants to get demolished and let us, you know, finish and pave it and deed it to us, that's a different, and now we're talking about more reasonable costs for three or four more spots. But that's a significant additional expense.
Then we're doing the maintenance, that's what he'd be getting out of it then.
Right.
Pardon? We'd be doing the maintenance on at that point, and that's what he'd be getting out of it then.
Okay, I think we're good. Thanks, John.
I'll be back, though.
Yes, I know. As a matter of fact, you can just take your place, and now I'll call on John Souter for new business, possible approval of water tower reservation bids.
Okay. So I, I think that in the packet, you guys have everything. You have Dixon's breakdown, the range of bids that we had from the six bidders, from 219, 700 to 295, 295,000. Their budget numbers included in there. Ironically, the 265 that they budgeted, when I add in the 219 for E&amp;L construction, comes out to about 265 with Dixon's engineering costs and E&amp;L, so that's not, I don't want you to be confused as that number in there, but their original budget was around 265 to do the tower interior and exterior. Dixon had went through, I didn't talk to the contractor, they went and talked to them, they've worked with them, not directly on a job in Virginia, but it was on a half a million gallon elevated storage tank, and they were the painters and did all the work. They had no issues or problems with them. Tom Rounds told me that he has no reservations, recommending this contractor, so unless you guys have questions for me, this is...
Bottom line, they funded in 265, and he's coming in at just under 220.
Correct. I think they must have known how much we got from the art fund. No, I'm just kidding.
That's about right, though.
The, Tom Rounds, the project manager, has worked, according to John, with Dixon a lot.
Dixon, yeah, Tom has been with Dixon and has been our Dixon engineer for probably almost three decades, you know, here, working with our tower, they've painted it, or been working with us, painting it, I think, twice. There was a time that it was painted red, and then it changed to the blue color that it is now.
But he's also got experience working with E&amp;L, is what you said.
Dixon was the, was not the, they've, they've worked with him, but indirectly on the same project down in Virginia, so that's, someone else at Dixon worked with them, not, not So that's, someone else at Dixon worked with them, not, not directly with Tom.
Okay, but Dixon worked with E&amp;L, just not personally?
Yes, yes, correct.
So as a company, they're kind of, that E&amp;L can get the job done well?
Yes, and there's a timeframe of 35 days, hopefully, that, that fits in there. And that's in the contract and everything, so.
Do you have any other questions for John?
What was their timeframe of start of the project?
We haven't set a date yet.
We haven't set it, okay.
So, you know, we got to get into a little bit better weather in Michigan, so it's probably going to be sometime, maybe May. Is, you know, hopefully we have a drier spring.
Than in the last year?
May, and Dixon anticipates that their availability to do the job in that timeframe is there.
Start to finish, yes, in that block. Otherwise, there's penalties. Because I don't want to be without the water capacity. So I don't know if there's a motion or what, but I guess what, I need authorization to sign the contract, send it down to E&amp;L Construction and Howell, and then we'll get up, once that happens, they will, we'll get scheduled, they'll be able to start working on getting, you know, I, paint. There was jobs being, starting to run out of the paint last fall because of supply issues. So I, I can't say exactly on everything, bam, this is, it's not like it used to be.
Dixon's going to, as part of their contract that we already put in place with Dixon, they're going to be side by side with you and E&amp;L going through.
Absolutely.
I move that we approve the bid from E&amp;L Construction, Howell, Michigan, for their bid in the amount of 219,700 dollars for a painted water storage tank and some additional restoration of water tower, and authorize superintendent D. P. W. to sign any and all documents to complete agreement.
We've had a motion from Larry, seconded by Bob, to approve the bid as read. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next on our agenda is further discussion of an item that was brought to our attention at the last meeting. There was no decision to move ahead on anything, but it was kind of left that some people were going to be looking at the lighting, talking about the intersection of Main Street and Second Street. We had a city resident who was concerned that she wasn't able to see well when she tried to turn off Main Street onto Second Street, and there were pedestrians crossing. So did anybody get a chance to drive down there between 5:30 and 6:30 and see what your opinion was of the lighting there?
I made a note, checked it out a couple times, and it did seem like it was well lit.
It did.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, weather or something like that could have played a factor in it, but I didn't see a time where it wasn't at.
Anybody else have a chance to do that? Yeah?
I thought it was normal.
Okay, so what's your pleasure here? Shall I do anything in responding to her, or shall we just let sleeping dogs lie? Or how do you want to move ahead?
I thought you were saying about traffic light, not a street light.
Well, she, she touched on that by asking if we would get another study done by M.D.A. for the possibility of a traffic light. But her, to my opinion, and perhaps because I also heard her on the phone a couple times, her emphasis was the ability to see.
Okay. Well, you get M.D.A., traffic study is open up a big can of worms, so.
Last time they came through, we wanted a lower miles per hour, and they raised it. So I agree with that.
Yeah, I had a conversation with one of their engineers, and he told me their procedure. And I said, well, I want you to go on 96, but everyone goes to 80, so let's make that speed limit 80. It blew right over that one, anything like that, come in.
So what do you think?
I think that if we, if I understand it correctly, John, all of our street lights are on photo cells right now, so it's not a timer or anything that needs to be adjusted by season or by weather conditions. They're going to turn on as we reach a level of darkness that...
Correct. There's three lights within 100 feet of each other at that corner. There's one, the, the power poles from consumers do not come any further than the alley. There are no poles between Main Street and the alley to put any more lights, and it's all sidewalk, you know. And so our poles are as close to the intersection as they can be.
And they're controlled by, my point, they're controlled by photo cells.
There's a photo eye.
Photo eyes that turn them on. So I mean, if we have an extremely overcast day, which we've got a lot of those, the fact is, they're going to come on in the evening even earlier than mid-summertime, for example.
And I've been down there checking them things and making sure. Occasionally, some of those lights, the, on consumers lines, not the ones downtown and the decorative ones, but they'll, they'll turn on and off. They're in the process of replacing them when they go bad, but people have to let us know. There's room on the website or a link on the website to notify them or call it in with an address or a pole location, and then they'll get to it and change it out.
So two, two questions. Do you want me to call or send her a letter? I'd rather send her a letter.
Yeah.
Just explaining to her that we've looked at things and about the photo eye, and at this time, we're not going to be requesting a study by M.D.A. Is that good?
Yes.
All right. I'm sorry. That's right. I, I was glad she came. I, I really appreciate the fact that she did come. I know it takes a lot of courage to do that. Some people just don't speak in public well and to, in their opinion, challenge the authority. So I really appreciated her coming in. I'll express our appreciation to her, for her community-mindedness. So thank you for considering that. Our last item on the agenda under new business, possible extension of emergency paid leave. Devin, would you like to talk about this at all, or do you think it's self-explanatory?
I don't know who was here when we did the first one, so I might want to explain. The Family First Coronavirus Response Act, FFCRA, allowed 80 hours of, as long as you had qualified, if you were asked to quarantine, whether you were exposed or whether you're positive. Employees were able to give 80 hours to their employees and not affect the leave any accumulated and to make sure that we were, make sure our employees were okay to be quarantined and still have a check coming in. The, that one expired in December, December 31st of 2020. There were still quite a few cases coming in, and there was an extension that was done by Mayor Hammond and extended it through 2021 at the federal level. The last one that expired wasn't in September of 2021. The ARPA actually had expanded and did the 80 also. There are still cases going on, and through our talks of reviewing the personnel policy, I think is where the subject came up, the mayor had asked that I bring this resolution back up, and I put it through the city attorney to make sure that it's possible. And after talking to the mayor, this is, we have had employees already utilize the 80 hours, and this isn't to give them another 80. This is just to extend it another year due to, it, it's still around that any, unfortunately, if somebody else will get it, that it will be available. But it's not to give more. It's just to get us through this. Terrible thing.
Any questions about that? So this is a, a request to continue the emergency leave for coronavirus. What's your pleasure?
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution, whereas the benefits of additional sick leave and expanded family medical leave were provided to employees pursuant to the Family's First Coronavirus Response Act. Said benefits have since expired pursuant to the FFCRA, December 31st, 2020. And whereas the city desires to continue to offer city employees the additional benefits provided pursuant to the FFCRA of sick leave and expanded family medical leave through December 31st, 2022. Therefore, it is resolved that effective January 1, 2022, the city hereby continues on its own initiative the aforementioned benefits under the FFCRA of sick leave and expanded family medical leave through December 31st, 2022.
Hold on.
Second.
Bob has moved and Mike has seconded regarding the extension of the emergency paid leave. All those in favor of that motion as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Looking for any other business that may come before council. Also, a public comment that I always forget. Our second public comment, is anyone here that would like to come forward for public comment? Or any other business to come before council at this time? Council discussions and observations? Agenda items for the next meeting?
I've got a couple. I'd like to make a suggestion, coming back to the comment that we made earlier about launching the website, that if logistically it's possible, maybe at the end of our next meeting, not during it, but near the end of the agenda, that we set up and do a quick demo for anybody that, that would like to see the new website and maybe help, just not go through in detail, but give them a quick overview of what they can expect. They may have already seen it by the time we get to Thursday, if we're successful on Tuesday, but just a quick overview at the end of our next meeting. And also maybe a little discussion on how we're doing with the, the grant writer. I know we haven't had him on contract for a long period of time. I know we talked about and approved him going forward with one particular grant, but I don't know if there's anything else he's surfaced or how he's doing to meet our needs.
Sure, we can revisit that. I have been in communication with him just this last week over some things that he sent that I needed him to explain to me, what he was saying, and Mike, just plain people language, and he did that very well. So he did say he'd be getting out another newsletter here shortly, the one that he sends that talks about grants that are out there. But yeah, we can, we can do that. We can talk about anything that he's brought out. We also will need to accept Randy's resignation, I guess. There's no, nothing else we can do except accept it. So if any of you do have opportunity to talk to residents or have someone in mind that might be interested in filling a now vacant council seat, have them call me or get permission for me to call them, and I'd be happy to do that.
Sure. I, I was kind of unclear on the discussion of the land purchase. Would that be a done, um, agenda item then?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless he brings another new proposal on his own, but that would be a new. Anything else? Thank you all for coming. Meeting's adjourned, April 4.